We could get your attention, please. We will kick off this Monday, March 5th, meeting, a regular meeting in the Talaqua City Council. The time is 7:02 PM, and we will begin with the roll call, please, clerk.
Counselor Long, here. Counselor Coles?
Here.
Counselor Hires?
Here.
Counselor Bliss?
Here.
Thank you. Item number two is our public comments. I'm sorry, I already skipped ahead. I'm trying to get out of here quickly. I apologize. Next up is our indication to be led by Associate Pastor Bobby Musgrove from Corners Temple Fellowship. There he is.
Would you please bow your heads? Father, we're so grateful for this great town. Lord, we recognize that your blessing is upon this city. Lord, we ask that you would give these leaders wisdom, that you'd give them guidance, Heavenly Father. And in First Timothy, you said, "To pray for those who are in authority, Lord, that we may live a peaceable life." Father, as everyone comes together this evening, I pray we'll be harmonious, Father. We'll walk in one accord, and we'll get accomplished what needs to be accomplished for this town, Heavenly Father. Lord, I pray a blessing on everyone here, everyone represented in all the departments, Heavenly Father, coming together. Lord, I pray that we walk in one accord, and I plead the blood of Jesus over Cherokee County, over Talaqua, and over every individual here, Lord. Thank you so much for your presence here, God. Lord, we thank you for our schools, we thank you for our firing, we thank you, Heavenly Father, for all of the individuals who represent this wonderful town. Lord, it's such a blessing to live here. We don't take that for granted at all. Lord, thank you again for the opportunity to minister your word. We pray your presence here is recognized, and we pray a blessing on everyone, and may things be accomplished for your glory. Thank you for prospering this meeting, and thank you for prospering this wonderful town. We pray a blessing over it, and thank you once again, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Cool. Thank you.
Join me in the flag salute. My pledge remains to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, in the name of our God, in the name of the Lord, in the name of the God that governs this world. Now, I can trade with the commitment meeting agenda item number two. It is our public comment section. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time, and the cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talaqua citizens, and in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to make public comments this time? Seeing no one even hiding behind the poles, we'll move to item number three, which is our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that members of the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate between items to be approved by one motion. Any item proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with the approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session. Counsel, we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, or we can remove items if you choose to stop.
Mayor, I would like to request that we remove the financial reports from March January.
We have a request by Counselor Long to remove the acknowledgement of the receipt of the financial reports for January 2018. Are there any other items? Hearing none, we'll now entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Second motion, and a second from Counselors Coles and Hires. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Coles?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number four, thank you, is our announcements, presentations, and reports. We have our usual, usually we have a recognition of years of service for April employees. This year, we do not, or this month, we do not have any, so we'll move on to a report from Ms. Booty from the library. She with us this evening? I don't believe that she is, and so we can move on now to a report from the Talaqua Convention and Visitor Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce. How are you doing? Are you ready to give your very first report?
Hi, Ian.
It's good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We appreciate having the opportunity to share with the city council and members of the community what we've been up to for the past month. My first month here on the job has definitely been just making connections, meeting some of our key stakeholders, meeting with our committees, and just getting around the community and finding out how things work here in Talaqua. So, that's pretty much from the chamber side of it. Another thing that we are, I serve on the Talaqua Industrial Authority, and tomorrow we will be entertaining six people from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce on their behalf. Many of you are joining us at some point in time during the day, and we appreciate that. We also have different groups from our community that we'll be meeting with them, and we will just be doing an economic overview of Talaqua and showing off our community, letting the Department of Commerce know what great things are happening here, and that information they can use as a power in creating new companies to the state of Oklahoma. So, we are definitely putting on the dog and pony show for Talaqua tomorrow. Also, I'd like to introduce our interim director of the Committee Ministers Bureau, Ms. Mercedes Goines, and she's going to come up and just give an update on a couple of events that we have, that we are working on. And also, I'm going to put some Red Burn Festival brochures, visitor guides, right over here. Drew was unable to come tonight, so I told him we would gladly bring these and just put them out and have people pick those up. So, this time, Mercedes, I'm glad you had it.
Good evening. It's been a pleasure to get to step into this position and get caught up with everything that we've been in the process. So, we have two main projects that we are working on right now outside of the Red Burn Festival, and that would be the 2018 Carhartt Bassmaster College Series National Championship. It's quite a mouthful, but that would be coming in July. We are working on finalizing some details as far as that goes, working out some sponsorship packets to bring together some local businesses to make that the best event that we can on our side, so that the visitors that we do have from out of town and out of state want to return in the years after that, the months after that, to come back and enjoy Talaqua. And then also, we are working on Visit Widget, which will be a marketing tool that will allow us to optimize the website that we have. It will work hand in hand with that. It will allow visitors to have more ready access to the destinations that we have here, make those more easy to plan. They can put a plan together and access it from their phone once they're here, whether that's events, our social media feeds, or all the places that we have here as far out as the lake, and as far out as the river, we'll be able to make those all accessible to them. And come next month, we will have more details on that, and it should be launched, so I'll have more details to share then.
Thank you, Mercedes. Senator, were you through?
I am.
Okay. And the report from the Main Street Association of Pamper brought for due tonight. Okay. We'll move beyond that to the remaining reports, the reports from the city department. The street department has submitted a written report. Commissioner, did you have anything else you'd like to add?
I hope everything is on there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Doesn't hear so. Commissioner, thank you very much. And I see Chief King in the back, but I think, do you have any boards you want to wave to your eyes?
No, just weekly reports unless there's any questions, I'm happy to field quick.
See a couple of head shaking notes, I think we're okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And then we'll move on then to item number five, which is discussion and possible action on items removed from the consent agenda. We did have the January 2018 report, financial report removed. Counselor Long?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Mr. Williams, we had in the January packet a significant amount of items that went over the 100% allocated budget, and I just wanted you to clarify for us. Is that acceptable? Are we allowed to go over?
Not supposed to. Supposed to make arrangements to either put more money in there, transfer something, or make arrangements where it's not over budget.
Okay. So, what would your recommendation be for us as far as how that?
Make some adjustments, get it back to the way it needs to be.
So, should we accept this as it was presented, or should we wait until?
If that's a true representation, I guess we have to accept it, but it's not a good thing.
Well, please note that it's simply acknowledged receipt, it's not accepted.
Right, right. I understand that, but I always like to try to accept the best notion possible.
I mean, there's a great irony, I think, that for a short period, we even had the treasurer, having gone over in his membership training and travel, and we were able to rectify that, but I don't guess he was aware, and I guess he didn't catch that particular part, but it does happen, and we'll rectify it when they occur, so we'll look into that. Ms. Curtis, did you have anything? Is she with us? Do you want to make any comments?
I sent, I responded to a number of the items with three question at 5:00 this afternoon, and most of those items have been rectified later, at a later date, in February or March. But I'll be happy to look further into them, and once that I didn't have answers for us, certainly we'll have an answer for you as soon as possible.
You mean, rectified in February, March, financial, correct?
Correct.
Uh, no, we physically did it in February, March. Any other questions, Counselors?
The State of Oklahoma Grant, I think, I was able to talk to Chief King for a few minutes this afternoon. I think we possibly combined two grant years, so is that rectified or not? Is that what I'm asking? That's all I needed to know?
Uh-huh. Do we have a motion to approve, or excuse me, acknowledged receipts of those, of that financial report? Is there a second to Counselor Coles' motion? A second to Counselor Hires? Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Coles?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number six is discussion and possible action regarding the agreement between the city of Talaqua and the Talaqua Farmers Market. Counselor Long?
Um, yes. Where is Ms. Marla? She is right there, she's behind that handle. Marla had reached out to me, I don't know, approximately, let's say, two weeks ago, and had asked about the contract renewal, and I agree to sponsor that on the agenda. So, I'm gonna let Ms. Marla get up, I guess, and speak. I think she has a few things she wants to share with us tonight.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I have given you all packets of some stuff. It's all inside of a calendar. I feel like I need to introduce our market to our counselors here and to the city. Talaqua Farmers Market is basically a volunteer board of directors. There are five of us and one measly paid market manager who run this thing. Our mission is to create the environment for our vendors to sell to our customers. I am proud to say that the Talaqua Farmers Market is considered statewide as the third most viable market in the state of Oklahoma. That is based on vendor and customer growth, as well as the programs that our market provides. We have a lady in Oklahoma City, Meredith, from the Ovi Project of the USDA, and she says that she finds that in almost every meeting that her examples include the name Talaqua Farmers Market. I'm proud of that. Talaqua Farmers Market is the first and only market to keep statistics of attendance and sales in the state of Oklahoma, and I have recently begun to share this with the new markets that are developing with the Oklahoma's Double Up Coalition. The Secretary of Agriculture, Jim Reese, was asking for statistics and numbers at our Oklahoma Farmers Market yearly conference in February. I was able to proudly hand him a copy of our spreadsheet of numbers. You have that spreadsheet in your packet. Talaqua Farmers Market tries to create a welcoming environment for all that attend. We have live music each week and a hospitality booth with tables and chairs for people to meet and spend time together. We provide infused water and tea, free for all, and loads of recipes, calendars, kapuchigah, flyers, and other information. We have a sampling station set up to educate customers on how to prepare some of the produce. We highlight the vendors that have that product each week. We have some programs that we bring to this community. We have the SNAP program, yes, that's available at Racers and Walmart. In our market, we had $6,200 that were utilized in the SNAP program in 2017. We have another program that backs up on that SNAP program that wouldn't be here without the SNAP program and wouldn't be here without us. It's the Double Up Food Buck Program. Double Up Food Bucks are given to the SNAP participants to match up to $20 each week to spend on fruits and vegetables. This is not available at grocery stores. We became involved at the beginning, 2013, of this coalition. It's a statewide coalition to bring this to Oklahoma. The funding is federal and local foundations. We added 10 markets in Oklahoma in 2017. We are now up to 17 markets in Oklahoma participating in this program. Our funding is guaranteed throughout the 2008 season. We have heard that we have been granted for the 2019 and 2020 season, but we have to wait for the official announcement before we can really officially announce that. This year, or this last year, we provided $3,500 worth of fresh fruits and veggies throughout this program. When we filled out the application for the new grant, our in-kind contributions, in other words, our labor and what we do with what we bring in consisted of $9,502.50 in That's just for that one program, or those two programs combined. We also have the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, which is funded by the USDA and is available for needs-based senior citizens. Upon application, the senior receives an EBT card containing $50 to be used only at a farmer's market. They have to use it all, or they won't be eligible the next year. We facilitated $3,900 of fresh fruits and vegetables to our low-income seniors in 2017. Our Farm to School Program, oh, that's the most endearing program that we've got. We created this in 2013. There are other farm-to-school programs in the nation, but not like ours. There is a school in Georgia that is trying to reproduce this style of farm-to-school. We take a mini-market to the schools, consisting of our market booths, four or five vendors with their booths, and volunteers. The students are presented with shopping bags, literature, and veggie bucks, and you have a veggie buck in your little packet there, to spend with the vendors. Teachers have told me that this may be the first time some of these kids have seen a fresh vegetable, much less meet the farmer. This program is funded by the Centers for Disease Control that funds the Cherokee Nation Healthy Living, that contracts Talaqua Best and Talaqua Farmers Market to provide this to the citizens, the children of our community. We did three schools in 2017. They spent $6,000 with our vendors with their veggie bucks. So, I think that the Talaqua Farmers Market Board of Directors, of which, like I said, there are five of us, tried to provide a valuable service to this community, and we've been told that we've been doing a good job, and I hope you think we can, I hope you think so too. We received the contract. You can't afford it. We did not have the time. I mean, you guys just got the contract to us Thursday afternoon at 4:30. We're supposed to start Saturday. It went from zero to $100 per week. We didn't have time to raise those funds. We're stuck between a rock and a hard place right now, and I need to know what you can do to help us. We're not asking for nothing. We are willing to pay. We always pay when we are in the park. We just want some, we need you to work with us, at least this first year, because we didn't have time to raise the funds to do this. So, I'd like to give it back to you to let us know what you think.
Marla, just so you know, I have made a commitment that until this issue is resolved, you, I will allow, you will use the pavilion until, under the terms of the previous agreement, until there's some resolution to this. So, don't let it interrupt your operations, don't let it bring any, strike any fear into your heart. We will go on as we've always done, until the council reaches a decision about what to do regarding the new contract. And I'll try to pass word long informally, but I'll say it publicly tonight, that the pavilion will be available to you under the terms of the old contract until they decide on a new one, and I'll do that under my authority, so.
Thank you.
Counselors, so don't feel pressured or rushed to have to reach any kind of decision tonight, or for the next, how long's your season?
We go from the first to eight to the end of October.
How many weeks is that?
31.
You all mull it over for about 31 weeks, and we'll see. Counselors, do you have any questions, Ms. Sager?
I'm just motioning that we approve the previous year's contract.
You have a motion to approve the previous year's contract? Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion and a second from Counselors Bliss and Hires. Are there any other questions or comments?
It was my understanding this was more of a legal issue and a legal precedent that we, the city, were not able to give. And you know, I'm active at Farmers Market, so you're not gonna go making a whole angry mob over here. And you know, Marla knows I come down there quite often with my son. We set the precedent, I think, with some of our other city facilities, where we've given a discount to the people who agreed, just like the Farmers Market, to lease the facility for a full year at a time, the 50% discount, like with the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, Talaqua Community Playhouse, and so.
Well, let me fill you in on that part. The rate is actually $200, and the 50% discount would mimic what we do, I believe, for the Armory. We're going to introduce that into the pavilion and park rental contracts at the next meeting. We didn't have that ready for this meeting. But it will mimic the standard contract in two weeks if you will choose to, well, to do actually opposite of what the motion is, but if you were to put that in there, it would be a reduced rate, and this does reflect any rates compared to $200.
Right, this reflects the 50% discount.
Correct.
Okay. And what you're saying is if they choose to recant that motion, we could wait and deal with this at mid-month? Is that what I'm understanding you're saying?
I am going to facilitate their use of the pavilion until you all give us a different direction. Yeah. So, yes, that would be a fair statement.
Okay. Grant, do you have anything legally you would like to interject for us to ponder?
Well, there needs to be reasonable compensation or consideration given for any contract with the city, any use of the resource in the city, and/or that the city retains control of the operations of the group. We don't have any controls of the city of the operations of the Farmers Market, so that comes out there and we can, you know, pull that back. The contract proposed did not set forth any control mechanism, or at least not any legally established control mechanism, so you guys are then put back to find a reasonable consideration, and obviously, no pay is not reasonable consideration, or no rental fee. And that's what Counselor Bliss is just motion for, that's what it was seconded. Going against my legal advice to entertain that position moving forward, it opens the city up for potential liabilities that I'd rather not talk about today, than open for, but it's just not good practice. You all set a precedent in your October 2nd council meeting when you set in place a reduced rate for other city facilities, and that one was the Armory, wherein you said, any group that rents the facility for six months, we get a 25% discount of the regular rate. Any group that rent the facility for 12 months or more, we get a 50% discount. That's why I made the recommendation as part of the negotiations of 50% discount of the rental rate for that facility, because this is an annual contract. The old contract ran out last month. The mayor has now made his comment that he will continue on with the prior terms, and he's able to do that, but given that suggestion just made that we're gonna come back with policy, I would encourage you all to table this issue or to take no action until you can bring forth the policy related to the pavilion and Norris Park, and really across-the-board rental for the city, I think would make the most sense. But at a minimum, I would not take formal action to reengage the same terms as last year as you're continuing on with a bad practice that has already been, it's counter to your prior policy with this same council. So, I just see this as a problem.
Thank you.
Well, I'd invite anyone to watch the YouTube video of last year's meeting for this exact agenda item, and you'd see that consideration was given by the services that you provide by the mayor, so just trying to stick within those guidelines if we did this last year, I think if we try to do it again this one.
If I'm hearing what you said, I mean, I think that there has to be, what you're essentially saying is the city can't give a free, there has to be some sort of monetary compensation.
It doesn't necessarily have to be monetary, but under equal protection, you'd want it to be like, with other like groups, otherwise, you're gonna have somebody say, "Oh, I want the same deal."
So, what would be considered a like group? Anybody that's renting it, or Talaqua Farmers Market 2, or Cherokee County Farmer, I mean, what is considered a like group?
Respect specific, I can't tell you an answer that today.
Oh, come on.
But quite frankly, you know, if you, as a council, believe that everything she just listed is a consideration that is being provided as part of this rental arrangement, you can find that way, but keep in mind that it sounds like that's gonna be conducted irrespective if they rent from us or not. I mean, that's just kinda what you just shared.
I have another comment.
Ms. Sager, go ahead.
I reached out to other Farmers Markets, and Muskogee pays $1 a year. Tulsa Cherry Street pays nothing. Muskogee does have a pavilion. Cherry Street, what they do is block off the roads. Fayetteville pays nothing. Um, I don't know what that one, North of Fayetteville. Fayetteville pays nothing.
So, the community service that you provide, all those hours, you don't bill us for that?
No, we do not.
When it comes to cleaning up my Talaqua, we should charge the volunteers for picking up trash on the city park.
That's right. We also, we have one lady here that picks up every morning from what was left from Friday night, so we are doing a little bit more service than that. And toilets. Yeah, and toilets. Hasn't paid. Hasn't paid. We should be billing you.
Counselors, do we have a motion and a second on the floor? Do you have any other questions or comments?
I mean, in my seat, or my main objection to this contract is, I think, the timing. I think that if we were going to do something like this, we knew last year, I mean, this is kind of the same song and dance, if you will, as we had last year. I mean, they came to us, we were looking at charging for the, at that time, the brand-new pavilion, we'd never been through this again. We were looking at charging, you know, we were told that the prices were already set in January, so it would put them in a position, in a negative position, to be able to charge, to charge more now, because the prices weren't set. And then I have an understanding that, you know, they, it's not like they just out of the blue said, "The market is gonna open next week, we need to get a contract with the city." I mean, I think that they've been trying to get a contract with the city, and I think, it's my understanding, and it could be different, that they've just kind of been told this, you know, it'll be the same as last year, it'll be, you know, we're looking into it, but there was no reasonable expectation of this, how much it's gonna be. So, again, the prices were set, now we're moving in, we're a week before the Farmers Market is supposed to happen, and we essentially raised the price 100%.
So, we haven't advertised or anything, because we don't know where we stand?
Infinity percent.
50%. And so, that's, I think, my issue, and I don't know how that can be resolved at this point, and I think the onus is now on the city to say, this is year two that we've had the same song and dance, or, that's a bad, that's kind of a negative comment. This is year two that we've had the same thing happen, so in year three... This is year two that we've had the same thing happen, so in year three, let's not let that happen again. Let's start getting the contract together and getting it together in time when, you know, the Farmers Market can work with their vendors to raise the price if need be.
Because we could, if we're just in.
Well, the mayor already said we'd honor or extend the current contract, so I, you know, we've already set policy, not set policy, we set precedent, might as well be policy. So, I mean, why not table it and just, let's get it worked out next meeting, get with you and see what we can do.
Can you do a second? It was Counsel Hires.
Sorry, I have one more second. Why did I hear him say it?
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor for approval of the new agreement. We've got some, maybe other preferences by other members of the council, so you all can amend your motion or second as you see fit, or we can call for a vote. You all give me a signal. AKA, speak out. Hearing none, we can call for a vote. Clerk, vote. Hold on, I heard a noise.
I was going to say, I'm happy to go either, I mean, I can approve last year's contract, and, you know, I think we're in the same position. Roll the tape and everything I said last year, I'll say it again this year. Or I think we can, you know, if we want to, I mean, he made the motion, so it's on his shoulder, if we want to wait and work out a different contract that has a smaller rate or get the right language in it to make it to where our attorney is more happy with it, I'm fine. But I think we, the contract was vetted by the city attorney last year, and so I think it's a vetted contract. And so this year, if we want to have another attorney, we can do that as well. I'm not happy to do that.
You've just taken a lot of heat.
Do the same with the green. I'm not a surgeon and don't want to operate.
We just catch a lot of flak from other organizations who feel that even though they're getting tens of thousands of dollars worth of contract dollars from the city of Taft Hall, that they're somehow being left out of the loop on this and being treated somehow unfairly.
Which we don't.
And you don't. And I think that's the difference. And I think that needs to be said, because there's a lot of backroom politics that goes on with that bitterness, and it's starting to become irritating. I'll just leave it at that. Motion and a second. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Long?
No.
Counselor Combs?
No.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
My OCD kicks in with the technical things, but I'm going to go with yes.
For the minute, are you just changing the dates from prior contract to this year? Counselor, I presume that under your motion, we're just changing the dates from ongoing contract to the next to reflect the council.
Changing last year's for this year, what's mine?
Clerk, can you make a note of that? Next up, item number seven, which is discussion and possible action regarding the city abatement board's decision on abatement of 231 Minor Street, Telkow, Oklahoma, 744 seats four. We don't have the authority or jurisdiction to do anything outside said municipality or zip code, so I don't know why that's there, but Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, good evening, counsel. This property found its way on our abatement board last month, and the board voted to declare the structure dilapidated and ordered it abated by demolition. I provided you some pictures in your package and some color pictures outside of your package laying next to your stuff that might help get a better idea of the condition of this property. It's inhabited, and I think that weighed into the decision to move to abate promptly by the board. The, I think that the pictures speak for themselves, the condition of the property. And so I feel like the decision by the board is just a burden. I'm not sure if the property owner is requesting a different decision on the order to abate or actually requesting more time. We were willing to give back the property owner more time to address the situation.
You were?
We were willing. I think Mr. Wilkins' office reached out a couple of times to Mr. Wilkins, and I did myself. I'm unable to reach him because I offered more time.
Mr. Wilkins is with us, seeking Mr. Johnson, if you will, are you through with your comments?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Wilkins, if you'll approach the microphone, then apparently you're going to have to halfway eat before it's not cut out. And tell us about your perspective on this issue.
Mr. Mayor, I am the members of the council. I apologize for having to put this on the agenda and waste your time. I don't disagree with the abatement board. It's my fault, Bob, because I missed the abatement board meeting that night, got a phone call. I had this on my phone, and got this phone call. While I was on that board, there's an extension, which the abatement board is pretty good at giving me on that. I did reach out to Mr. Moore, I thought it was Johnson, Bryce, and I got it very quickly. I had text message to the voice media, so anyway, that's beside it. If you can extend it a couple of months, one day, I'll have it done. Okay, no, we're trying to have a quick, whether it's been cut.
Clarify, sir, because I think everybody's wondering, what are you going to have done?
Well, I'm going to have a customer abated.
So you're just wanting to take that in your own hands and I have to say you do it before you even charge your cable for trash?
Correct.
Well, okay, that's pretty simple. Well, we're going to have to do anything on the inside, going to have to incur the expense and mess with any kind of lien. I would recommend that. Yeah, other than the time, we just give the deadline then of May 31st. Is that sufficient, Mr. Wilkins?
Yeah, I should leave you.
Well, thank you. Okay. I was, I mean, I didn't know. Years of people are asking for extensions to, like, fix it up and salvage something.
No.
All right.
The house had a fire, and it has some other problems, and I agree that I just will take that.
Thank you for being reasonable. We don't always get that in the baiting situation, so thank you. I was girded for a different kind of request.
Well, I mean, that was what I was going to do at the abatement board, and like I said, I missed the meeting, so they only give you ten days, you know, which, you know...
Try to expedite. Regardless of what you hear, we do try to expedite that process, so thank you, sir. Do you all want to make a motion to abate?
So I'm in.
Second.
A motion and a second from Counsel Hires and Counselor Long to provide a deadline of May 31st for demolition of the structure 213 West, excuse me, 213, what is it? Minor, just no directional.
231.
I have, apparently, okay, thank you. 231, my apologies.
You need to see.
I guess, hey, you know somebody can fix that form. Thank you. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long? Yes. Ms. Cherry, you can do it.
Item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve carnival and amusement ride applications submitted by Sam's Amusements and Carnivals for the event scheduled May 9th through May 13th, located 2450 South Muskogee Avenue. Mr. Johnson, is this the Boy Scouts carnival that happens every year?
Kind of.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
It's the same company. I don't know the details. Our application wasn't submitted on behalf of the Boy Scouts for Bryce Felds, who typically allowed this property to be used for that. This, last year, they tried it out west of the United Catua Band's former casino property.
Because it's so wet.
Right. Yeah. Well, I think there's a number of reasons, and I think they had a lot of success with it there. I don't know if it's a nonprofit charitable thing for the Boy Scouts anymore, but I don't know.
Sam's Amusements, that's a major application.
Exactly. And after my review of the application, I can't recommend approval at this time. There are some insurance certifications that we're going to still need to pay, and some history of previous locations where they operate. That, you know, it's partly our fault because we haven't developed a proper application to fit the order. We never did. It just happened at Bryce Feld's property since the existence of time. So once it moved off that and we had a new applicant, we looked at our code and recognized that we don't have an application that addresses all the requirements to be submitted for amusement parties coming to town. And so that's something I need to rectify, is to get that application put together. But some of the minimums are the insurance requirement, which we did receive that certificate last year before we approved it, and we don't have it this year. And so until we get this, I don't see approving this contract at this time, or this license at this time. I think the event is May 9th, I believe, so we have a little time to fix this.
So we'll wait just on the insurance?
That's the biggest thing, is the insurance protection that we don't have.
Would you like us to table this and address it at midnight, then give them two weeks to provide that too?
Please.
So I will hopefully make that motion.
A motion to table, is there a second? A second from Counsel Bliss, quick roll call, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion period.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, next up is item nine, which is discussion and possible action as needed on the All-Inclusive Park at Anthony Brandon. Counselor Long?
My apologies, I just can't talk about this in a while, and Charles, I'm so glad you're here tonight, and you've been doing a wonderful job, and I just wanted to, I know the last time you and I were able to talk and Mr. Carr, Ms. Marcy, we were trying to look at some possible dates to set for our community bill, and I know I was there along with a lot of people in this room who have kids that play soccer out there really frickin' early on Saturday mornings, and noticed that the curves had been floored.
The curve has been.
So that was wonderful. I was filled with jubilation when I saw this occurred.
Where we're at right now, we're trying to get on the construction managers to do this instead. And at this point right now, he says he can't put this on schedule really well, because he is so far behind. So I'll come back to him over the next couple of weeks, and hopefully we can help this out. But he needs to be able to do the servicing and do that, and he can set up the community up.
And I knew a large portion of all that was out of control with the warranty requirements that were in that for the servicing materials. Thank you for sharing that with me. I just have a lot of people ask me every day when they see me, that's the most question I get most often when I'm out and about, and I'm unable to answer it. So I try to give them any new information that I have, and I haven't been able to touch basically lately. So thank you for all that you've done, Charles, it works great.
You're welcome.
And there were kids playing on it anyway, by the way.
Yes, we had put psyche fence around it for three winters, and it doesn't work.
Little four-year-olds can't read signs.
You know, that psyche fence is just all attention.
Yes. But I appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Charles, I think Counselor Long, we now have, making this motion here, there's no action. We'll go to item number 10, which is discussion and possible action on approval of a resolution number 04-02-18 in support of Marcy's law. Has my name after it, but I think that Chief King and Counsel Hires can probably speak to it as well as I can. I don't think he heard me mention it, but Chief King?
Yes.
Do you want to give, or Counsel Hires, do you want to give a brief synopsis of Marcy's law, the resolution that we've got here in front of us tonight? It's a legal kind of thing, or a law enforcement related kind of thing.
Yes, I'd be happy to do so, Chief Hammonds had me distracted, I wasn't paying attention.
Oh, I could have provided the explanation, but I did you a favor there, sorry. So I recognize.
I apologize for not being fully attentive. Marcy's law is proposal legislation that would actually give victims of crime more rights. It would require district attorney's offices, police departments, sheriff's departments to make better notifications, and for victims to be more involved in the criminal justice hearings, sentencing, things of that nature. I think it gives the victims a better voice, requires that we as law enforcement, as prosecutors, are required to give those victims a better voice, a better say in their cases, where now that's not required. It goes on quite a bit, but it's not something that's required. I have personally already signed up on the website to endorse Marcy's law. I think it's a good move. I think it's a good movement. Anytime we can have a better voice for those who have been victimized is good, thank you. So.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
One correction, just the title is spelled wrong on the agenda.
Is it?
Yes.
I believe that the S is how they spell Marcy's in these cases, isn't it? Is that what we're talking about?
We're approving the resolution.
Oh. In the R S.
Oh, on the actual agenda itself. I didn't catch that even reading it, so.
Yeah, it should be on.
I think the intent's pretty clear. Can we still approve the resolution?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You said resolution number.
Okay, yeah, we got the resolution number, and so just as a point of clarification, yeah, it's got the S in there, not the C, but it is correct on the resolution, or at least in that one. Two?
It is.
Okay, good. Have a motion for approval, is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry, I asked, and you all basically tied. Counselor Combs, I'll give that to you, and we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion period.
Item number 11 is discussion and possible action to approve purchase of video panels for installation in the city council chambers. Mr. Powell?
Evening, council members. I'd like to discuss the possible action to approve video panels installed here within the city council chambers using funds allocated last year for council city improvements. What we propose to do is to have two 70-inch panels, one located here, one there, they're on arms, so they can be angled toward the audience, and we would have a third over in this wall here to my right, that will allow the directors, managers to be able to view it also, and even for the council members, we're proposing to have nine, 10, 10 and a half inch screens mounted there in front of you, that will allow you to see anything that's being presented. For example, there'll be a laptop presentation, shot a channel so that you can play it on all panels at the same time. So you can look down, you've got any instructions, you can look down in front of you, and see what everyone else is saying. I've gotten three quotes, the cheapest being AAA. Sorry, can't take tonight, we had a last-minute emergency, but AAA bought it at the last price of $16,422.91. Will go below within the money we have allocated for the improvements, and I'd like to ask that be approved. Any other questions?
What happened to the price? It was so much higher last time.
Well, last year, it was more involving video cameras, multiple video cameras around, so we would have, we could, this year is more video panel, presentation panels, so the audience can see what everybody's talking about. That would get us away from these projectors, ones that are all, it'd be kind of nice if the panels were all.
Yeah, we got shot down last year for the video cameras and the streaming and the broadcasting equipment. This is just so we can see in the room.
Yes, we had money for it last year, but it was within the budget last year. It was turned down due to we had a lot of last-minute financial issues in the city council, and it was paid for. It was not gas, it was not oil, it was just paid for. So the money got carried over from last year. So we have sufficient funds to take care of this.
And Mayor, what do you see us using these things for? I mean, other than, will it just be for presentations that are given?
Yeah, we stripped it down to simply just so everybody can see what we're seeing. That's really what it's about, so that there's, you know, we're not stringing up a screen or hanging a projector or bringing it in in a bag, just everybody sees the same thing. We don't have the ability to, not without a lot of extra effort, put it on the video or anything like that, and certainly for live, but we can at least see in the room, the same thing, the crowd can see what we're seeing.
Yeah, so why not, we're not used to how we're splattered against the wall. And they can be used for training issues also. Multiple persons can be presenter and play multiple screens for large crowds.
We don't have any control, I'm sorry, Council. Go ahead.
Were any of you items viable on state contract?
Matter of fact, the AAA is on state contract.
Yes, I did.
But for a guest.
Okay.
Matter of fact, the party don't visit, we count them off, I believe, and they add them visits to Cherokee.
Counselor's looking for your approval, we got the three quotes, and we tried to, we removed a lot of features, and it won't be everything that it could be, or should have been, but it'll at least be something, and we look for your motion to approve.
I, I'll make that.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Please.
Second.
Second, Council Combs, Council Byers.
So, I like where this is headed. My question is, do we have the, how does all of this work with, do we have the capability to the computer to make all of this work?
Yes.
On the screen, but I don't see anything about the computer or anything like that.
Yes, on the, on the back of these monitors, there are monitors right in the back, allow them to share, screen share with each other.
Fine.
Yeah, so, you would basically have a laptop, with wireless, that would connect to these devices.
So, we already have that, we don't need to buy?
Yes.
New?
Yes.
Somebody comes up, they just plug into the laptop and?
Yes, everyone will have a reasonably new laptop, they can plug it with no problem. And they should be able to breathe from the table here.
Motion and a second for approval of the purchase of AAA, is, is there any more questions? Are there any more questions?
Yeah, well, I mean, installation, we done by city employees, we're gonna contract that.
It's a fully turnkey install.
Yeah.
They will install everything.
Oh, right, that's installation, included, that's $16,000.
Yes, included. And also, the only thing we'll need from our city will be, I'm sure our maintenance department will rather drill holes in these walls, just drill the walls, so they will put the pad, put the brackets up.
Any only people?
So, am I gonna have one of those sitting here, or is it gonna be?
It'd be a, it'd be a low, it'd be a low panel, so it won't stick up.
Where am I gonna put my books?
Yeah, and it can be, it can be observed at angles, another $16,000. It can be observed at an angle.
Randy, do they sell microphones at this company? Can we buy a new microphone?
That's not possible. But we do have spare microphones, and it's back in the wall there, it needs it also.
He also has, yours is semi, but yeah.
Well, yeah, but mine at least works, his kind of cuts it down.
Yeah, well, he needs basically, sort of directional, so it cuts out all the background noise, you have to be facing it, trying to talk to him, like.
As soon as she moved away, it kind of.
Yeah, when she turned her head.
Yeah, she turned her head inside, green, it would go down.
All right, motion and second to approve. Any final comments or questions? Roll call, please, clerk.
Is this assuming the AAA?
Yes.
And the amount of how much?
Sixteen thousand. I turn my page, $422.91.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Byers?
Yes.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Council Wong?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Let's go to item number 12, oh, you're up again, sorry. Which is discussion and possible action to approve purchase and installation of panic buttons within city hall.
Yes, of course, since I've been here, I've seen these, these two, there could have been more, since we had this problem, ex-employees in the city, how they're making some threats, so I think security is pretty important to our, our city employees. And I'd like to discuss the possible action to purchase, install panic buttons, wireless panic buttons, total of seven, to be installed within the city hall. I'd like to define exactly where we're going, since this is a public forum, they don't even know where they're located at. They will be installed by AAA, lots of Talacau, which is a local provider. And so, these are wired, so they can't be moved if needed. And what it is, is that these locks, they're wireless, they actually report upstairs into the sheriff department, they're already set up, the county has a similar setup right now, and it'll report up there. And the price here, we're able to $500 for the clean install, it costs $400 as the annual fee for the monitoring portion, with the tamabit alarms.
Um, sorry.
Oh, sorry, could you go ahead, Council?
I guess I'm, can you explain the monitoring? We're paying this company to monitor, but that calls the sheriff.
I want to say that the county sheriff department is actually making the monitoring fees.
Okay, so we pay this vendor, then the vendor gets it to the sheriff?
Yes, because there's already a system installed upstairs for county.
Okay.
And we're basically just riding on that system.
Okay.
And the 400 is just called doing business, maybe doing business through the alarm, and dispatch the appropriate people.
And then what's the fee for subsequent years for monitoring? If it's 400 for the first year?
I don't have it made, I'm assuming it would be the same amount, 100. I can't see it all very much, it's just monitoring, it's not producing any kind of equipment or anything.
Chief King? Oh, Chief King, sorry, this time it was me, me not paying attention, it's okay.
Might I also suggest from a law enforcement standpoint, response standpoint, that we don't just limit this to city hall, whether it's something at Winter Wonderland, at the Talaquatics also, you're talking about high school kids taking money, and it's nice to know, I don't know if they have the capabilities, I know that part of the reason the sheriff's department monitors the rest of the courthouse is, I think, even though they're wireless, they're, they have to be so close to the monitor itself. I mean, we'd be happy to monitor them. In our old police department, we had certain businesses even still had hardwired alarms to their, to their place of business, they, it just started buzzing, and we knew, I would just, I would suggest why, if we do this while we're doing this, some other places, golf course, Talaquatics, it's, it would really help on response time, it's, it's a lot less if it's an instant notification, so, that'd be my lone suggestion, is to look into that also.
That would keep people from dropping their trousers on the first tee box at the Mexico.
So, that's all I have, and we'd be happy to, if they're capable of getting the station to the police department, we'd be happy to monitor that, hopefully that would take care of that fee.
Don't, don't drop your trousers, somebody will hit the panic button, yeah.
Yeah. Look out there, man, yeah. Hold, there's a felon.
Yeah, pretty sure the.
Bring it over.
I'm not sure, but.
Is a friend.
Be it a possibility, be it more, if we have to get the signal, like, out to our police department.
That might take a little bit more technical kind of wizardry and some further investigation, but we'll take Chief King's recommendation, under advisement, try to get that done as quick as we can, if that's okay. I mean, we can put it all off, but we can certainly come back and make that happen.
And the install should be directly also, defenders will do the install and provide some fellow training to the, to the people that be maintaining the rest of the police.
Some questions?
Counsel.
So, it goes directly to the sheriff's office upstairs, or does it go to the dispatching unit? And then they call?
I was advised it goes to the sheriff's department upstairs, as far as further, where it's being actively monitored upstairs. That's the word. It goes to the sheriff's department upstairs, where there's existing systems.
So, would, would this work offsite, or is it just particular to the building?
It's a wireless system, so there would have to be some kind of wire-based receiver to receive the signal, and the range could be anywhere from 100 to 200 feet off, maybe more.
So, if, so if we did put one in the golf course, we'd have to have, you know, some kind of?
We've got a block. It'd probably be hard. Yeah, it would have to be somehow connected to our city network.
It would give back from that one, yeah. Oh, actually, the golf course isn't fiber, it's wired, that's right.
Yes, it's fiber all the way up to the airport, and then it shoots a wireless signal across the runway.
Oh, yes. Are you sure? Cisco air bridges or whatever?
I replace those.
Oh, my old friends.
They have two bridges over there, one for, one for video and one for data.
So, if the wireless doesn't count, nothing works?
That's correct. But if a wire gets cut, so.
That's true.
And discussed the fatigue, hopefully there's additional, I'll brief you with additional funding for that.
Mr. Carr is gonna make a couple of comments here really quick.
The reason we had this and not the whole city, we have the money to pay for this, but if the council would like, I can research, and Randy can also research, to see what it would cost to do everybody, and put it in the budget.
Yeah, we can certainly.
But right now.
Everyone needs to be done, but definitely with the hot traffic areas.
I can research them all, and you can decide, but right now, this was just for this building because of the cost. That's why the cost is fairly low, because it's right here with the sheriff's.
We can get this, you know, the other things done, either end of the year with some residual funding, or, you know, first of the year, when it was gonna be like.
Yeah, if I could get some prices off the side, any kind of money pops up, then we could certainly do the rest.
Sounds good. Did we have a motion and a second on this, or have I asked? No? Let's ask for one of those. Anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
Tom, do you want one?
Do we have a second to the motion for approval?
Second.
Second from Council, is the total cost of $1,900. Give us a roll call, please.
Council Byers?
Yes.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Council Wong?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Item number 13 is discussion and possible action to approve purchase of security locks for the Armory Municipal Center and Norris Park Restrooms. Charles, you're back up.
Thank you, Mayor. What this is, this will enable us to control when the restrooms are open and closed. Now, this is for the armory down here, because the two systems are gonna work together kind of one. So, what I would ask, I know you've got a quote there, $1,0144.50. I am asking that you waive the three quotes I said, unless it is. I think it's the same company?
Yes.
Same company, so.
So, you're asking sole source, is that what you're asking?
Well.
Essentially, just to waive the other two, the requirement for the other two, you know, quotes. Functionally, it's the same thing.
Was, was this service available through state contract, to kind of get a benchmark on?
I don't know.
This was the only local source I could find. It's possible there could be a state source under out there, further away than you just go here somewhere.
Does this include, on the, on the agenda, it says Armory Municipal Center and Norris Park Restrooms.
Yes.
Does that include the Pavilion Restrooms as well?
No, no, it is, but we're working on that for the upcoming budget year.
So, this is what we had in the budget, I mean, this is what we put in the budget, I guess at that point.
No, we didn't, we didn't put any in the budget, it's coming out of, what county do you want to pull it out of?
Out of the Parks Department. They have a dump truck and a backhoe.
Oh, okay. And Charles, you said, that's right, you told me that, that, I forgot that.
And it's coming. You said that it was more important to protect these assets, because we've spent tens of thousands of dollars trying to rectify the situation that are left behind by vandals and things like that.
Also, it'll cut down on the workforce, because right now, we have employees going out, opening them, closing them, and presently, we have the police department that will take the time to go open them and go close them, and it's just too time-consuming, it eats up too many man-hours.
And take a load off the PT. And then if they are occupied, sometimes they can't get down there in time to open them for.
Right. Farmer markets, they could probably tell you, they've been working, or there's a wreck or something, I think, chief, and they couldn't make it before the start of market, and, you know, then they ended up not getting unlocked, and it was just a lucky few. But this would automatically.
I think this is a great idea. I mean, I think especially for the bathrooms, the armory, I'm gonna say, if you think it's a great idea, then it's probably a great idea, but I'm not as familiar with kind of how that works.
The armory even more so, because currently, if you're not, if you don't lock the door, anyone can walk in.
Yeah, and sometimes renters will either not latch it, not lock it, I mean, there's just a lot, a lot of issues there, so this, and, you know, doesn't mean staff has to be around to check that or anything else, so.
So, I would say that this is probably a good start, but I think we should also really look for money in the budget to get the Morgan Street Pavilion done as well, especially with summer coming, I mean, we're gonna need those bathrooms open and shut, and even the other pavil, I mean, the pavilion itself, the, the workroom part of the pavilion, I think this could benefit from that as well.
We currently have fiber optic going from A to down to Norris Park, just carries video from Norris Park. We plan to take, take our network, our data connection, put it out in Norris Park, these doors at work, it won't take much, you get a wireless bridge connection from there, across streets, and that is.
Yeah, it'll work pretty.
At later time.
I'll, I'll trust you on that. He's speaking my language.
Know what a bridge is.
And not so good for that, but. Counselors, is there a motion?
Some do.
Is there a second? Second, Council Combs?
I just want to make a statement, I'm 100% in support of this, because I know it's a huge safety thing, especially for Jamie in the back, I know that she doesn't want anybody sneaking up and trying to hurt her down there, because she's down there by herself a large portion of the day, but I am concerned about sole sourcing, when we know that it's available from another vendor, but we don't really have like any benchmarks to know if this is a reasonable quote. So, that's just my concern.
Well, when you get into this technical world, it's very important to have a sole source vendor in some cases, that there's a lot of interplay, one point of contact protects support. If I can lend a little bit of my expertise to that, it's, it's hard to sit there and say, hey, we standardized on, and I'm going to computers, but you know workstations, HPs are cheaper, so you shift gears for no reason, and then later, you've got a third company that's cheaper again, it's just usually better to have some consistency.
It is easier to get this local vendor gear, there's the problem.
And then there's that.
Relate to some companies.
It needs one block away.
I understand, I can definitely understand the arguments for, but.
Counsel, we've got a motion and a second. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Council Wong?
No.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Byers?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Charles, thank you, I think you're up for one more, is that correct?
Correct.
Item number 14 is discussion and possible action to transfer funds from Parks Department dump truck account, number 210-50-8304, and Parks Department backhoe account, number 210-50-8338, Department of Department Maintenance account, number 110-69, this doesn't have the dashes, 110-69-6300, for the purchase of security locks, and this is just bookwork to do what we just did.
Correct.
To cover what we just did.
It's the fund.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Council Byers, clerk, roll call, please.
Council Wong?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Byers?
Yes.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Item number 15 is discussion and possible action to adopt policies 300 through 308 and 324 in the police department. Chief King?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council. I do have a new version of Policy 301. Came to my attention after I distributed it. There were some technical difficulties. For some reason, our list of persons supposed to be appointed to the Use of Force Review Board would not stay in there when I changed it to PDF. So, I had to delete that, retype it, and send it, so it's in there now. And it's on page two of the Policy, uh, Policy 301. So, it gives you a list there. Who will make up the Use of Force Review Board? Other than that, if you have any questions or comments or concerns, I'd be happy to feel those.
Thank you again for giving us a wonderful weekend, fully agree with your impression of that.
I'm trying to keep it, keep it light. We still have about 50 more that are already ready for your approval. We're just gonna do it in small sections because it's a lot of reading. It's mind-numbing to do very many at once.
Once again, thank you, it's very well laid out, and for celebrating, it's, it's wonderful, thank you.
Now, do you get this from...
Lexipol is who our insurance carrier, O-MAG, contracts through, so these are, we're not writing these from scratch. We edit these some, and the sections we've modified, it shows on your draft that you're given if we've modified a section or not.
So, this is, so it changes with state law, state law changes...
They push that out automatically, and then we'll bring it to you for approval and go from there. But yes, any kind of federal court decision comes down, uh, state appellate court decision comes down, it changes the way we do things, then they'll push it out automatically to us, notify us, and then we'll bring it back to you to modify policies.
So, were there any big changes in any of these that...
These are brand-new.
Well, these are brand-new, so we won't, I mean, the ones, I mean, they've edited them since we started working on them some, but we've been, we've been working with Lexipol for over a year on these.
Right.
On them, so there have been some minor changes to some of them, but not any major ones.
That's good. Those two approved.
Your motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second from Councillor Boyes and Long. Any final questions or comments? Tess?
Can I allow to ask him a question about one of the policies?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone with Tess can ask me that.
Yes, Tess, which policy?
Policy.
Yes, ma'am?
Am I understanding right that nobody from the media is allowed to interview somebody or somebody that's interested without your permission?
Um, correct, and that's more of a, it, it's not so much, um, interview, and I'd have to look at the policy per se. You know, do you have a copy with you, specific?
On my phone.
On your phone, okay.
It'll take me a minute.
A lot of that is more intended to, and I'd have to read it to see if it needs any clarification or modification. It's more of allowing the media to record like a perp walk, per se, without permission from us. Um, just thinking about tho, those people's rights, a suspect's rights and a fellow's rights. And, um, be happy to look at it in depth. I didn't think of it from, from, from your standpoint on that, and I apologize for that.
Well, what if they want to be interviewed?
They want to be interviewed? We're not, we're not gonna keep someone from being interviewed, yes. They say they're right whether to talk to you or not, so...
I was not prepared to get to that, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, give us a roll call.
Councillor Combs?
Yes.
Councillor Hires?
Yes.
Councillor Bliss?
Yes.
Councillor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, Chief Nelson. Item number 16 is discussion and possible action to add five lifeguard positions in the Recreation Department. Ms. Petty and Ms. Moyer?
Hi, I'm gonna hand out just a few things to you real fast. Uh, my request is for us to add in an additional five lifeguards from what we had last year. This would allow us to have more people to pull from to cover the pool hours, uh, pool parties and swim lessons. We had some issues last year where we were understaffed and unable to open, and we would really just like to make that so it's not going to happen again. Uh, I'd like the community to have the opportunity to be at the pool.
And Jackie, if I remember right, basically, mathematically, you doing the arithmetic, we have enough lifeguards to cover the positions. The problem is, is that, and then even a, a little bit of flexibility for an illness or something, but we're also dealing with, with teenagers.
We are. Uh, the majority of our guards are either high school or college students. Many of them are also in several sport activities, family vacations. It just gets to be a little tight sometimes, making sure that we have proper coverage at the pool. Uh, this is simply just to allow me to give our guards a shorter day so that they're not tired and ineffective in their scanning, as well as giving us, you know, the ability of, I have a set of sisters, and when they're both gone, and then I've got somebody else, you know, needing vacation or sick or... Unfortunately, we had a car wreck last year, so I really just want to make sure that we have it covered.
They're more likely to quit mid-season, I mean, all these things, and I bet Charles, if he didn't leave, can probably attest to some of the just inconsistencies relying on an adolescent, uh, your labor force.
And I have to say, the guards that we've had have been awesome. I mean, they at least communicate very well with myself and with each other to make sure that our shifts are covered. It's just unfortunately, there are times where there's just no way to do it.
And, and I'd also say this, other than just obviously, than covering those, you know, hour, hour and a half, or whatever it was, when you weren't able to, to stay open or get open because of the labor shortage, this isn't fundamentally going to affect the outlay of cash. You're just looking to cover those hours that we are scheduled to be open.
Correct. It's, and also in, with that, that will lead into, in the budget that I have for my salaries, it looks like with correct projections that we will be able to cover this cost for the guards coming in for this fiscal year. Uh, we will need to relook at that coming up for the next fiscal year, but I do believe that we have the money to cover for them now. Uh, with adding in guards, I'm able to add in Tuesdays for pool parties, as well as adding in some more swim sessions, which, um, swim lesson sessions, which the community really seemed to enjoy last year, and I would like to give them more opportunity for that.
Now, that would add cost, because that's additional working hours, but it's also additional revenue.
Yes, but it's also additional revenue. They wouldn't be there if we don't have people coming in.
And you'd also be cutting down on the overtime. There was some overtime for us last year just because we had certain guards that were always there, and these other ones were calling in, and they were our only person to work, so they were getting...
Your work forces are getting time out of half.
Overtime, yes.
And, and unfortunately, uh, from being a lifeguard myself, I know that if you guard longer than eight hours, I mean, four hours is a good shift, eight hours is a long shift. If you're there longer than that, your scanning is not nearly as effective as when you first came in. You're just, and we're out in the sun, and I really just want to focus on the safety of our community. Questions?
General hearing, so we would entertain a motion to approve the creation of these positions, and it would, me and budgetarily, would obviously create a, a different number, but, uh, functionally speaking, we're not gonna be out much more cash than the occasions that we are.
Bringing in revenue, yes, sir.
Quote, budget, right?
Yes.
So, creating a position.
No, no, I think that the, the point is, is that we have a certain number of hours the pools open.
Correct.
So, we're just creating a little bit of flexibility. We won't add more on each shift or anything like that, it's just to make sure that we've got those other hours covered.
I understand, but we're not paying them, they don't...
Right, yeah, okay, I see, okay, yeah, so then you, you've got...
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Second. Motion, second, Councillor Bliss and Hires, roll call, please, clerk.
Councillor Hires?
Yes.
Councillor Bliss?
Yes.
Councillor Long?
Yes.
Councillor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Ms. Moyer. Are you up again with item 17? We have got a discussion and possible action to purchase two Ferris mowers model, two Ferris mowers, Model IS 3200Z in an individual amount of 11,699 and a total amount of 23,398 to be taken from account 110718301. What's the label on that account, is it four mowers? Okay. You've got the explanation, Councillors, and there's some information in your packet. Do you have any questions, Ms. Moyer?
Did we also put this out for bid or quote?
We originally put out for a quote for a 104-inch mower. Uh, after looking at the mowers that the Recreation Department currently has that are running and working and viable, I wanted to go back and look and see if we could go ahead and get some smaller mowers that are actually going to be able to be used in more areas than that large mower, especially with us adding in the all-inclusive part. So, I went ahead and I spoke with Express, and we talked about some options, and I felt that this was our best option.
Did we get quotes from any other vendors?
I did not, no.
Did you happen to look at the state contract crisis on the same?
We, there is not a state contract price on this mower yet.
Okay, but there are state contract prices on other similar-sized mowers?
Yes.
That would be comparable?
Yes.
In specifications needed?
I would, yes.
What about quality? What about your performance? Did you have recommendations from Charles or anybody else about these were the mowers that we want to stand?
Richard from Cemetery has already purchased one of these, and he really enjoys it. Uh, it's durable, it's gonna last, it has, I think, a four-year warranty on it. Um, it'll help us to have an even cut across even the soccer fields, which we kind of know are not completely flat, uh, so that, I'm hoping that it'll give us a better look across.
Now, Richard doesn't enjoy being on the mower, does he?
You know, he might.
And you recommend it, so...
I know. Have you looked any closer to looking at a city garage that can, you know, I know that we've talked about it from a vehicle standpoint, but also from a mower standpoint. I mean, this has nothing to do with the mowers that you want to buy, but I feel like we're always buying lawn mowers and we're this department and the next department and the department. I mean, I think last month, we bought lawn mowers for the street department. And, you know, and I grant, I, I understand that some are big and some are small. But we've had a lot of lawn mowers in the city.
The, Mr. Carr?
So, right now, we're, right now, we're doing plans for a centralized garage, which money was, you know, we talked about that. Um, but there is also conversation for doing a, a centralized, like, small engine repair. And yes, that's being discussed.
It still doesn't go back to your point of why are we hiring armies of people and fleets of mowers for all this stuff? Yeah? And there's gotta be maybe, whether it's privatization in some cases, or truly reevaluating the 300 acres we own?
Well, I know last year, I asked to do kind of a feasibility study on the mowers and the mowing and the time costs and the buying of mowers and all that it goes into it. And I think it came back that it wasn't cheaper to contract that out, if I remember correctly.
Not purely, right.
Um, but it just seems like we're consistently buying lawn mowers for here and there, and...
And if we bring it up...
Every department is doing, has a lawn mower, every department has somebody mowing that department's section of grass, and I know that we have a lot of grass in the city, but, you know, does the rec department have the, I, I don't know, the cemetery is a bad place to say because it's a big cemetery, but, you know, is there, does the cemetery have enough grass to handle this mower, the mower that they have? Plus, maybe they can use the mower in the rec department to handle the grass that the rec department has. And, you know, I think that those are things I would just like to look into. I just think we're always buying lawn mowers. I mean, it's the first thing I, one of the first things I said when I got here, and every summer, we just continue to...
And we'll kick over a lot of territorial ant hills when we do it, but we will certainly see if we can't get a, a better approach to that because I think that they almost, to use Ms. Moyer's word, enjoy buying these lawn mowers. I half expect them sometimes to buy personalized license plates for them or something, or get some dice and hang down from the, you know, uh, the bar or something. Because, I mean, they, they really almost see it as like a point of pride or something. When we've inquired with each slight bit of our toe in the water, they get very defensive very quickly. And, uh, but it is inefficient.
And don't get me wrong, I mean, the, the answer might be, no, this is the way, this is the most cost-effective way to do it. You know, every department has a mower, and every department has somebody that, you know, that might, I'm not, if that's the most effective way, then by all means, I'm, I support that. But it just seems, from the outside perspective, looking in, that...
If, if I could just interject from my personal department for the recreation...
Here, let me, let me go ahead and say this.
Go ahead.
We, we've got, uh, we've, we've, Councillors made, made his comment, let's get back to your mower that Richard really enjoyed. Do we have, do we want to...
I will say it has nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
You happen to be the one standing here.
Take, take that.
Well, what I was, what I wanted to...
No, 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 I'm gonna go ahead and chop that off. Let's move on from that discussion that's not even technically on the agenda, and go back to this, uh, conversation about the mower. Um, you know, any other questions to Ms. Moyer's about this mower? And do we want, do we want to purchase it?
Well, she, we want to, she's asking for two.
I'm sorry, these mowers, this model of mower and two of them, I apologize. Yeah, I forgot about the Chinese.
My statement is, I just wish, I mean, I know there are, plus there are lawn mowers that have been on state contract that are quality, that I've used before in mowing 300 units in a whole type of housing, so I'll just say that. And I'm done.
All right. You want bids? The, you want bids?
Well, I, I think it's always nice to have a benchmark, something to look at, to know reasonableness. That's just my personal opinion.
Do we have mowers to mow in right now for two weeks?
I believe, you all aren't short of mower.
That's what I was going to try to state. Uh, this is for placing mowers. I have one mower for the Recreation Department and one mower out at the ball court right now. So, with 160-plus acres to be mowed.
Does this company, Express Equipment, do they have decent stock and available for pickup like tomorrow? If this were approved tonight, would you be able to pick them up, or they'd have to order them and have them shipped in?
I know they have at least one in now, I don't know if they have two. Uh, this quote's from a few weeks back. Uh, we've been working on this for a while, so I cannot guarantee that they're both there.
So, potentially, even if this is approved tonight, you could still potentially have to wait several weeks before it arrives, or you could wait 24 hours.
Correct.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
I mean, I'll make a motion to approve because I think we have gotten to, we've probably waited long enough. I mean, we're probably to a time when it's time to start cutting the grass, and we gotta get it ready and set up. I mean, I'll make a motion to approve, but I think that we really, as a city, should start, should really look into our lawn mower situation, mower field.
More like the, is it the Shriner's, or who is it, no, wait, who, no, that's motorcycles. Who takes the lawn mower around the parade, that's, that's awesome. We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Second from Councillor Combs. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please, clerk.
Councillor Bliss?
Yes.
Councillor Long?
No.
Councillor Combs?
Yes.
Councillor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moyer, thank you. Item number 18 is discussion and possible action to approve, uh, the travel and training policy for the City of Telequa. Ms. Curtis?
They break the review, the travel policy, chose to make just a couple of changes to the policy as it was proposed. Uh, those changes included, um, item E of section four, which is page 131. 132, uh, G of item four was also changed to reflect the GSA per diem rate, and just figuring how long they're gonna be gone and, and funding that based on the GSA per diem rate, which eliminates keeping up with a lot of bookkeeping.
So, Danielle, without being that now we have to update 137 for that form, so we have to track, our breakfast, lunch and dinner, uh, we would do it in quarters, as we do with GSA, and then we'd subtract out for meals provided. So, you just need to correct that form to comply with the changes that you made in the policy.
That's correct.
And Greg, will this go within compliance with the requirements on our CGBG contracts?
I think so. Had I reviewed those recently, I, I think it did.
I know this was talked about, I think, when I was out with the flu, so I didn't get to hear all that conversation. I apologize, I didn't go back and watch that video to see more specifically what you guys discussed when I was out. And I should have done that, I'm sorry, Stephen. I'm sorry. I'll be better next time, if I ever miss again.
Do we have a motion on the travel and training policy?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second to Councillor Hires' motion? Second from Councillor Combs. Any final comments, Councillors?
Uh, just to stay for the record, I still don't like section five or section two, A1. Other than that, I see my problems with the files. I love it.
Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Councillor Long?
No.
Councillor Combs?
Yes.
Councillor Hires?
Yes.
Councillor Bliss?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Take my notes.
Thank you, Councillors.
Thanks, Ms. Curtis. Item number 19 is discussion to adopt ordinance number 1255-2018, rezoning the property located, uh, property located, excuse me, at the southwest corner of the intersection of North Cedar Avenue and East Allen Road, from single dwell, a family dwelling District R1 to multiple family dwelling District R3. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, this is a discussion-only item. It was approved last month, planning on zoning unanimously. Uh, if you're familiar with your property, a lot of people call it the Reeceer property on the southwest corner of the intersection of Cedar and Allen. The current property owner is Sean Shepherd, and he's here with us. He is a local developer that has a history of developing nice duplexes and apartments in our community, and that's what he intends on doing with this property. He's already obtained a building permit and to fix up the old Reeceer pool. He has long-range plans of that possibly being a clubhouse for his development. He could probably fill you in with more details of what he has, but, uh, he's asking for this for duplexes and/or apartments, so...
Did we get any feedback or...
No, um, no, we, we didn't really, we, uh, I don't know if it's the property owner or the property itself that had the lack of concern, because I'm sure you recall the property just north of this property. There was quite a bit of, um, contention about their request. And, uh, they, uh, they were ultimately denied by this body, by a former makeup of this body of R3.
Totally different membership, wasn't it?
Completely.
Completely different, well, not to me, but, yeah.
The same, so... So our recommendation would be to approve if we were voting on that, but we aren't yet.
I didn't even have to vote last time on that. A few years ago, did I? I didn't even get to, you know, just deny it, wasn't it?
Well, they did, they rezoned it commercial, but excluded the R3 district, so...
Counselor, do you have any questions of Mr. Johnson or Mr. Shepherd?
No, Sean wanted to come up and say anything since he's going to be my neighbor.
Well, I mean, do you all have any questions of these two gentlemen?
I'm a little curious, you say clubhouse, what kind of developments are going to be?
It'd be similar, partly like to the pines of Southridge, two-story apartment buildings, that being a clubhouse. The old Mr. Reesers' old house, we're currently remodeling now. So it would, you know, the intent would be have a swimming pool out there, and it's, you know, it's all getting updated, pretty much everything in it is going to be new. So that would be a place for the tenants to come in and, you know, rent the kitchen out or rent the pool out, not rent it, but check it out for, you know, maybe shower, a birthday party, or something like that, possibly an office in it for someone to come in and print some stuff off, a little, you know, couple of computers, things of that nature.
Anything else, Mr. Shepherd?
That's it. Unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions, Counselors? Not an actionable item tonight. You know, you know the process. We'll end up being back in a couple of weeks to either approve or deny, but tonight, here we have any questions for you, and we'll see you sometime later this month.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Item number 20 is discussion to adopt ordinance number 1256-2018, rezoning the property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Cedar Avenue and Bridge Lane from single-family dwelling district R1 to neighborhood commercial district C1. Mr. Johnson?
Again, this is discussion only. This one you may be less familiar with, the location of this property. I hope you were able to identify it from the map that I provided. So the entrance into Oakwood off of Cedar Avenue is actually Lane. I wasn't aware of this until this request was made. So it's actually located on the northeast corner of Cedar and Lane. It actually, it's west of the Premier Dentistry, and we did have people at the meeting that came concerned, but as soon as they found out that it was for Dr. Dotson's eye clinic, they all got up and left the meeting. So I think that bodes well for the sentiment of the neighbors in the area, that they were satisfied with what I've had planned, and that is an eye clinic to be located there. That location, there's a little white house currently on the property that would be removed and replaced, which is eye clinic, is my understanding of it.
It's where the, it's going to go down and it gets a little...
Yeah, it's a valley on the backside of the Premier Dentistry or urgent care area over there. Some of the concerns that they did have, the ones that I was able to speak with, was the zoning of neighborhood commercial allowing anything. So if Dr. Dotson wasn't to practice there or, you know, decided to get out of the contract altogether, they were concerned of what could go there if it wasn't going to be Dr. Dotson's. And so the planning, the owning commission attempted to address that by recommending to you guys passing C1 Neighborhood Commercial with a special use restriction for medical office facilities. Thinking that that, that fit what was already happening on that property adjacent to the bypass, that's become a medical office center over there. And so that was their recommendation to you guys, a special use restriction for medical office.
Okay. Counselor, do you have any questions of Mr. Johnson? Any questions or comments here from anyone in the public, an applicant? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You're up next again, I think. We'll go on to item number 21, which is discussion to adopt ordinance number 1257-2018, vacating or closing following street easement located on block, uh, excuse me, block four, block two of the Cherokee Woods subdivision, beginning at the southwest corner of said, did you really do this? I didn't even realize that. Okay. Beginning, beginning at the southwest corner of said lot with a lot of other legal description involved back to the point of beginning. Mr. Johnson?
That's grants.
Okay.
Actually, grants fall all the way around. It, this was a new thing, we headed down this path at one time in the past for Cherry Street, the Northeastern Health Systems new building at the Medical Office Building is what they call it. They were going to vacate a piece of property. It didn't happen. We replanted it. So this is a verge for us attempting to do this. As you can see in the images that I provided, I had a surveyor cut out the radius curve of the easement that was there for the purpose of a cul-de-sac at the end of my cabinet. As you can see from the image of the mortgage inspection survey, the cul-de-sac would have went through the living room of this property. I've spoke with Commissioner Riles and administrative staff, and we have no intention of ever constructing this cul-de-sac, especially if it's going to require us to purchase this property or at least condemn this property and remove it for the construction of the cul-de-sac. So there is a buyer of this property that was for sale. Before they can close on this property, they're going to have to have this situation rectified. So we are going to try it this way, but my understanding is even though we pass this ordinance and we say we're going to close this easement, the statute gives us the right to reopen it through an ordinance of this body. So it's not technically permanently closed from this day forward. And so I think the person who's buying this house still has due diligence to do on their part to ensure that their purchase will be able to be completed. But we are trying to take care of our end of it.
Okay. So we can't do anything here this evening? There'll be a little thinking to do because it's a discussion item only. Do you have any questions of Mr. Johnson?
Counselor Hires? How did the house get built on top of easements like that?
For all of the grief that we take about what we do miss still these days, we are worlds beyond what used to happen in this community as far as making sure that people follow the rules. I mean, we still miss quite a bit, but we are way beyond where we used to be 15, 20, 25 years ago.
It was a long time.
And that's my long way around of saying it was built in that timeframe. Basically applies to C and R, and we weren't really paying attention to that. If the inspector made a visit, left Scott's Cafe to go take a look, he probably just said, "Sure." So, yeah. Well, I, I've been around long enough, was an employee here when some of that was still just barely going on. It was really starting to get rectified by the time that I showed, I mean, not because of me, but just when I started to kind of float around these halls. Any other questions, Mr. Johnson? They were really afraid of that idea in terms of they started to, you know, sleep. Yeah. There are, Jenny, thank you. And we'll move on to item number 22, which is discussion impossible action pertaining to proposals for banking service. Ms. Curtis?
It was requested that we go out for proposals on our banking services. We did that. We had banks return proposals, our vest, Armstrong, and Bank First. Bank First is currently being utilized.
Don't turn your head and talk really loud.
I think that some of the bankers are here. I don't know if you want to allow them to speak or not. I know Armstrong and Bank First are represented.
Yeah, I see, I see two. Do we have a representative from our vest? Gentlemen, would you all like to come up and speak to the proposals that you had submitted?
I don't have any proposals.
Yeah, may I ask who asked the change?
I emailed, I emailed. The cover letters, I don't have copies for everyone.
What day you sent that?
Uh, Friday.
Friday, I believe you.
Friday. I can make them.
You may really want to speak about these proposals. The copies didn't make it in the email, apparently, or nobody's seen them as yet.
I do have Armstrong's. They, they sent their proposal.
So who requested the change?
Counselor Combs requested that we send out for proposals, not necessarily a specific change.
Ms. Combs, why do we need the change?
We need to look at fees and interest rates of our accounts. It hadn't been done as long as I can look back and see, so, so approve.
It's been, it's been more than five years since something like this has been done.
I couldn't imagine a better question. I couldn't hear why, I couldn't remember the last time.
Requirement on how often we do these things?
Is there anything we should know?
Sorry, Counselor Bliss, I can't hear you. Could you just take that? I'm sorry.
It is on the night. I was asking the treasurer if there's any, if there was any requirements on this or if there's anything we should know before we proceed with taking action.
No, I sent a certified letter to Daniel that this is in my purview. This isn't something that is supposed to be taken up with counsel. And now I'll get suggestions and I can get input, but this is something I'm at decision.
Well, I'll point out just saying that I gave her a directive to basically ignore that order that you didn't come in to give to anybody, because we feel like we have everybody to ask this question if we so choose, especially if it's at the request of a council. So we proceeded, and we would do so again. I think that point is very clear. It's more to Counselor Long's point, not making these kinds of comparisons that she's brought up a couple of times tonight.
And I'm going to have to apologize, I did not in the, we get a huge amount of junk mail, and I apologize, I did not even see this in my email, but I can tell you where to order some prescriptions in Canada and do some other illicit illegal activities.
Refinance your house, buy a Rolex.
Refinance the house, expand your Wi-Fi, you know, stuff like that. I'm very versatile these days, but I apologize, I haven't even had a chance to look at any proposals that the three banks have submitted.
Well, and all it was, was the cover legs, correct?
It was the cover letters that had the summaries and then the page that showed banking service charges. Banking service charges, Armstrong has no, no charges whatsoever. Bank First have been good about adjusting stop payment charges and things like that whenever, whenever we need, need them to, or whenever it's certain issues. This is not something that I was excited about doing because it does take some time and it is going to take some time to make a change, but there was a clear difference in the proposals.
Well, can, can we see those numbers and what that difference was being, not just in what the proposals are, but, but in actuality, as far as, you know, what we pay and what we would pay if we went with, with a different entity? So, I mean, you know how many accounts we have, you know how many times we have a fee assessed, you know all those things, and can we see that in, in real, real numbers?
Sure, sure. We can, we can crunch that, but it'll take a little bit of time because, like I said, we're in the middle of budgets and other, other issues, as you know. But we'll be happy to do something a little bit more appealing as far as a breakdown, if that's, if that's the way you want to go.
I would think that would be a key piece of needed information to make that decision. Wouldn't you agree, Counselor Combs?
It is all in the cover letters. That's why I thought, and I thought you would maybe want to review that.
My apologies, I did, I did not see that email, I apologize.
Yeah, it shows the banking fee.
It shows the banking fees, it shows the interest rates, it shows everything that is pertinent within the 200, 300-page documents. That was the easiest way to give you their information, those contained in those documents. And I felt like the most efficient.
I think I should probably see the documents as well.
They're in my office, you're welcome to come and look at them anytime, or I can make copies, but it's, it's going to be a...
That's fine.
I'm going to be killing it.
We had Charles see to read this last weekend, and this, this weekend I had nothing to read, so...
And there's no major holidays.
No major holidays reading now.
Lanny, have you had an opportunity to read the three proposals from the three local names?
No, it was not presented, then.
Okay.
Did I not send you the same email?
I got a bunch of emails about 5:00 today.
On Friday.
I'm looking at the email right now, Daniel. You sent it to the four councilors, Mr. Carr, the mayor, and Mr. Boyd. So it wasn't even sent to Mr.?
My apologies.
Williams to review.
It should have been. Enough liming, leave you with the copies of the cover letters and this.
I would like to request that we table this until we've had a chance to look at the supporting documentation.
We'll table it, I'll act.
Either way.
Well, table me, it comes back next meeting.
Well, I do have a motion to table, so...
Oh, did somebody already say that?
I didn't know what you said.
Yeah, that's, that was where I was going, yes.
I thought you said make one.
I will make a happy motion to table till mid-month.
Okay.
Daniel, will two weeks be enough time to get the information we were...
Can I get a second really quick? Yeah.
A second and then proceed with the question. Two weeks will be enough time for you to...
It should be.
We're still waiting on financials too, so I don't want to overburden an already overworked department.
You were sent the February financials as well, and I have them in my office, our copies.
I got January's, man. So we got February's done too?
Yes, and I emailed those to you, they weren't on the meeting for tonight, but for approval, but I did want you to know that we have completed them.
Wonderful. Acknowledged, manager.
Wonderful, one step closer to where we need to go.
Court, give us a roll call please.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. Item 23 is, you can propose executive session, is there a motion to enter into the executive session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second with a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
We're not at all focused back.
Not always.
Well, not, not always.
Yeah, you've tried to create a legal exception to that before, but, yeah, we'll, we'll pause and get back. Court, give us a roll call please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Carry.
We will reconvene and go to item number 25, which is discussion possible action pertaining to the 2018, 2019 contract of the April 21. Counselors, do you desire to take any action on that item? Hearing none, we'll move to item 26, which is discussion possible action on actions or inactions of city treasurer. Do you wish to take any action on that item? If I could say the word "action" one more time, I'd appreciate it. Hearing none, move on to item 27. When do you want to have a mid-month meeting? We've got five Mondays, so it can be the 16th or the 23rd.
It have to?
It don't have to.
Oh, okay.
I've kind of enjoyed those couple of months in a row where we didn't.
That was nice.
It's a bit nice, but it makes the first one kind of rough.
Yeah, I'll admit that too.
16?
I'll try the 16th. We can set it for April 16th unless there's an objection.
16th is good.
April 16th. Oops, I nearly went right, April 16th, 7:00. Turned in, item 28 is adjourned. Is there a second?
There is a second.
We don't have that yet. Now we do with Counselor Long, roll call please.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
No.
Counselor Hires?
Yeah, the old...
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
We are adjourned?